All right, everyone, welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March 13th, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless that address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant then may make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. The applicant then may, or excuse me, after all public hearings, the council will then vote on resolution and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call our first item?
Our first item today on our-
Madam Clerk, can you pause for just one second? I want to make sure Link TV is okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Our first item of business today for Monday, March 13th, 2023 is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Is there anyone here to speak on consent agenda items 1 or 2? Anyone here to speak on either of those items? Agenda items, consent agenda items 1 or 2? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is approving the professional services agreement supplement number 4 for preliminary engineering services between the city and Alfred Benish and Company for the Adams Street from 36th Street to 49th Street Rehab Project, introduced by Suarez.
Second.
Second by McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Suarez?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is resolution approving the bond of Keisha Fine Art, who has applied to conduct an auction house at 1208 O Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 2A and 2B is introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second, McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, I think we do have-
Councilwoman Washington.
Councilwoman-
Uh, yes. Sorry, I'm quickly reading through again. I'd like to make a motion to amend 2B, changing the hearing date from Monday, March 27th to Monday, April 3rd, at the request of the applicant.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Discussion on that particular motion? Okay.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0 on the motion to amend number 1. And the main motions for 2A and 2B? Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling items 4A and 4B together. Application of Renteria Taco Rico Inc., doing business as Deleon's for a Class C liquor license located at 5012 North 27th Street, and the related manager application of Ricardo Diaz.
Perfect. Hello?
Hi. Good afternoon.
Good, swear you in, so please raise your right hand.
Please raise your right hand.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is a truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Joel Lenowski with the Morrow Poppy Law Firm here in Lincoln. I represent the applicant, Renteria Taco Rico, who applied for a Class C liquor license for the operation of their restaurant located at 5012 North 27th Street here in Lincoln. Present with me is Ricardo Diaz, Deleon Renteria, and Maria Lopez Dominguez. They are the owners of the entity of Renteria Taco Rico. They're here seeking liquor license for their Deleon's restaurant. If you're from Lincoln, you're probably familiar with Deleon's Restaurant. It's the same format, same business model, same business plan. Ricardo's family is the Deleon family. Ricardo's worked for the restaurant since 2010-ish, so a long time.
A long time ago.
A long time.
So now he and his wife have started their own venture. They currently have three operating stores, the one on 27th, they've got the one at 1212 South Street, and then they've just opened up one in North Platte, so they're venturing out. And again, as I stated, this is the same business plan, business model as the ongoing Deleon restaurants. The application is pretty straightforward. I've read through Investigator Parker's report. I appreciate his investigation. I don't think there are any issues at the city level. He did point out there are some issues of some non-disclosure, some traffic issues that were brought to our attention by the commission. That's something that I'm going to be dealing with. I've already reached out to the commission. I would tell you that was an oversight on my office's part. I'm cautiously optimistic that will be resolved. There's a show cause hearing in April, so we are on top of that. And again, I'm cautiously optimistic that will be resolved. So other than that, again, I think our application is straightforward. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take the same, otherwise I would submit it.
Very good, thank you. Any questions at all?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Councilman?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items 4A and 4B.
Second?
Second, Washington. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A, approving an agreement between the University of Nebraska Medical Center College of Public Health and the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department to allow a plan to supervise service learning, capstone experience, or other service learning or research experience for students in the graduate program of public health for a three-year term.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none? Okay. Madam Clerk, move us along.
Item 5B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for February 16th through February 28th, 2023.
Is there anyone here to speak on pending claims? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
We can now vote on these items. Item 5A is approving an agreement between the University of Nebraska Medical Center College of Public Health and the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department to allow a plan to supervise service learning, capstone experience, or other service learning or research experience for students in the graduate program of public health for a three-year term, introduced by Suarez.
So moved.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Accept, item 5B is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for February 16th through February 28th, 2023, introduced by Suarez.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 5 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 6. I'll be calling item 6A, street and alley vacation 22007, application of Scooter Properties LLC, to vacate Sheridan Street East of South Folsom Street, generally located at 2400 South Folsom Court.
Director Marvin, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. We have a very narrow sliver of property of the Elmo pops up. And it's technically, it's not really functioning as a street, but it runs, here's Folsom Street, here's West Van Dorn, here's the Homestead Expressway, and this parcel right here is not going to serve as a functional street. What it would get zoned as would be I Zone, and Michelle in our office has deemed the value at $1.50 a square foot. LES would retain some easements on the property, which would, and it's not of a functional size that it could be sold individually to anybody else. So the agreement here would, because of the easements, the width of the property valued us at $8,010.
Looking at me. We saw that.
So that's what's before you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Marvin?
They are, excuse me, they are buying the whole, the whole right of way?
Yes, yes. The width of that would serve their current business uses.
So it doesn't go all the way to the back of the lot?
No, apparently that parcel, because as you can see, to the, to the east of there is Salt Creek, so they must have never platted that close to the, to Salt Creek.
Okay.
Mr. Marvin, I have one question. So you said the easement would be retained by LES?
Yes.
So it's not a, it's a-
There's a, there's a power line that goes through there, and they're retaining their rights to have their electric poles through that area.
Any other questions from council? Very good. Director Marvin, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak on this agenda item?
Good afternoon, my name is Anne Post. I'm an attorney with Rimblewood Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of Scooter Properties. That is the property owner that owns the property on both sides of the proposed alley vacation. As Director Marvin said, the property owner recently acquired the property to the south, recently means, I believe, within the last year, so, and is looking to vacate and acquire this alley to just incorporate it into their operations as they look to reconfigure their site plan and redo some grading. And so as part of that, yes, there is the retained easement for LES. Also, there is the requirement to retain the conservation easement for flood volume storage over the area is a condition of this vacation of right of way. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Post?
There are no questions, though. I was curious when I saw of the, who had bought the lot, I was hoping maybe we would get some coffee or something.
Expansion of a great local business. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Question, no, very good. Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it. Anyone else here to speak to item 6A? All right, very good. Let's move forward.
I'll be calling item 6B, change of zone 23003, application of Constructors Inc., for the change of zone from AG Agriculture District to I-1 Industrial District to allow for additional storage and staging of construction materials on the property generally located at North 70th Street and McCormick Drive.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Kalkowski appearing today on behalf of Constructors Inc., 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite So this is a- A change of zone from AG to I-1 on approximately 24 acres. It's, the property directly to the south is also owned by Constructors and being utilized for I-1 purposes. The purpose of the change of zone for this piece is to allow some additional area for them to have construction storage for some projects that they have ongoing. It is already annexed. It is shown for industrial in the comp plan, and you can see on the zoning map, it's directly adjacent to some I-1 zoning. So it was approved on the consent agenda at Planning Commission, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Danae? Yes, ma'am.
It appeared as I was reading it that this is like zoning, a zoning change catching up with a real use, so is it already being used as such?
There, it looks like a little portion of the west side of it is already being used for storage, so this kind of brings us into compliance and allows the entire parcel to be utilized.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you. Is there anyone here, anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6B? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
I'll be calling item 6C, change of zone 23001, application of Olson for a change of zone from R2 Residential District and O2 Business District to O3 Business District to add office space and associated parking on property generally located at 5025 Garland Street.
Hello? Is there anyone here to speak on item 6C? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, councilmen, and women. My name's Matt Langston, I'm with Olson. I represent my client, Child Acupuncture Center. And so currently, the black and white portion, let me get it pulled up. Okay. The black and white portion is a building that they currently have. In the last two years, they have enlarged their structure and parking. Unfortunately, due to the increased need of their services, and also the fact that they have joined with the LPD, who has offices in this building now, they just need to expand. So as part of this, they're asking to get a change of zone for that lot to O3. We worked with planning, planning department and decided that would be the best alternative so that we can get offices in here. They have been, had a history of being good neighbors, and with that, they're looking at putting in the offices that look like a house, so it fits within the neighborhood. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. McGinnis. Councilman?
How big is the, the new building? Do you know square footage?
On the drive over here, I knew you were going to ask that, and I want to guesstimate it's about 1,800.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Will it have a basement?
No. Slab on grade.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Could you explain a little bit about sidewalks, street paving?
Sure.
Because I know it looks like it's two parcels or two lots that you're looking at.
Correct. There is a north parcel and a south parcel. The north parcel will be the office building itself, and the south parcel will be for parking. We're staying within the setbacks of the O3. We will be paving 51st Street as part of this, that's adjacent to our property, it is currently gravel, as well as the gravel alley that bisects the property. And with that, sidewalks to the north, east, west, and south along, what is that, Garland Street? Yes.
So, I drove through there earlier this, today, and I was just curious, and I think I have an answer, because this map is very clear. From the, the existing parking lot on the south side of their developed area on the west there, it looks like they won't be crossing, the driveways and the parking lots won't connect across 51st.
That's correct. Yeah, they will be two standalone entities.
And will there be sidewalks developed along the south side of the south parcel? Or do the, do they just parallel 51st Street?
We will be installing sidewalks along the entire south, both the existing and the proposed.
Any other questions for Matt? All right, seeing none?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6C? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please move us along.
That concludes Section 6 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 7, ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item 7A is change of zone 22040, application of Scott Sullivan for a change of zone from R4 Residential to R4 Residential with landmark overlay on the property generally located at 2980 Holdridge Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Discussion? Yes, sir. Councilman?
I just want to say this is a good thing. One of our old city council members would say, but having somebody go in and take care of this nice facility and the way Scott can do things, I think will be a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, very good. Clerk?
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B, approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln and the Department of Administrative Services on behalf of Department of Education Vocational Rehabilitation Services for the lease of space by the Department of Education Vocational Rehabilitation at 1330 N Street from January 27th, 2023 through December 31st, 2029, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7C is approving a real estate sale agreement between the City of Lincoln and Q &amp; L LLC for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 2201 South 84th Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Discussion? All right, seeing none?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7D is approving the Lincoln Bold redevelopment project redevelopment agreement between the City and Lincoln Bold LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 205 North 9th Street and adjacent right of way, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Second, McGinnis. Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to introduce a motion to amend number 2.
Okay.
I would second that amendment. That kind of wasn't, it should have been in the form of a motion. I move that we adopt motion to amend number 2.
Very good.
Thanks for your second, Richard.
Very good. Seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion on that motion to amend number 2?
Would someone please explain for folks who haven't seen motion number 2, what it entails?
We'll get Director-
Marvin.
Marvin up here?
Basically, what motion to amend number 2 does is it clarifies an exhibit that shows the amount of distance a footing would encroach into the city's right of way. The original graphic showed it encroaching 1 foot 4 inches, and what motion to amend number 2 replaces the exhibit and shows it encroaching 1 foot 10 inches.
And is that encroachment into public right of way above ground, below, at grade or below?
No, it'd be below ground.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilwoman? Any other questions from other council members? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. Any other questions or discussion on the motion to amend before us? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Back to the main motion. Any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I do. This project is a project that's very exciting, and I want to thank the developer for having a vision for what could be added into Lincoln, and for their flexibility in trying to negotiate ways that adjacent businesses could weather the impact of the project. We have a document of shared community values in our comprehensive plan, and in that comp plan, it paints a picture of a vibrant, safe, and strong city that has a diverse mix of businesses and entertainment areas, neighborhoods, and economic drivers. But beyond what the comp plan describes as the physical future of the city, it also lays out the process by which we make decisions in getting there. The level of civic engagement we said we want should be what we do. We should be engaging our neighborhoods and the businesses, and everyone who has a stake or who is affected by the project should be engaged in these decisions. I'm not saying that they should make the decisions, I'm saying that they should be notified and involved and engaged in the conversation. Last week at the public hearing we had on this project, I came away thinking that this was the public hearing that should have been had at the Lincoln Lancaster Planning Commission. But no one came to that public hearing in support or in opposition, and folks told us last week they didn't know about it. And so what we had last week was a lot of conversation about decisions and impacts this project could have, but this was the first opportunity the public had to really speak about it. And I'm glad that everyone came out and spoke. Thank you for taking the time, for putting your comments together in a cogent manner so that we could all understand. Thank you for the amount of time that everyone put in to making certain that each of us understood the project, the benefits it might accrue, and the impacts that might potentially happen. I've looked at Lincoln Bold from many angles, parking, neighborhood compatibility, private property rights, probably I looked at that the most, and impacts on businesses. And I looked at the project for both the short term and the long term, and I tried to take the perspective of the developer, I tried to take the perspective of those who I tried to take the perspective of those who were directly adjacent to the project and to the city as a whole. As I said, everyone's been generous with their time, and thank you. Thank you for a robust public hearing last week. Thank you for all of the emails and the phone calls. Thank you to the city staff who found a way to negotiate a really decent development plan if this project goes forward. And thank you to the Downtown Lincoln Association and the Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation for searching for solutions. And no matter which way the vote is tallied this afternoon, I know that both of you will keep your commitment to being a convener and a problem solver to benefit Lincoln. Mr. Glenn, thank you and your team for your willingness to try and help. This project is exciting, but I can't support the project in this location.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
I would like to say just a few things. I know Lincoln is a growing, dynamic city, and we're fortunate that this is so. This growth is happening through the leadership of the city and the community, and it is an exciting place to be. I do have concerns about how and where this growth happens and at what pace. I just want to talk just for a moment. I am new to the council, and I'm gaining an understanding of what TIF means, Tax Increment Financing. And what I understand is if these funds were approved, then we would have at least input into the process, that we would get some money to the affordable housing, and that we would then in 20 years be able to do get taxes paid to the city with this investment. I've gone back and forth, and it's been one of the toughest decisions that I've had to really look at so far on my tenure at the city council. I do see the remediation in terms of business impact, and that is my most important concern at this time, is how it would impact local businesses. And with the valet and marketing, I see that as remediation. I know we've gotten lots of emails and conversations and phone calls, and one of the questions has been, at what cost do we continue with the growth? And that is what I want to say for the moment.
Anyone else that would like to speak? I will go ahead and speak as well because it seems as though other councillors are okay. And I'll speak too, even though we're on 7D, 7E, and F as well. As Councilwoman Suarez mentioned, you know, we have heard from business owners and landlords who are concerned about the economic viability of both their businesses, their individual businesses, but also the Hay Market in general during this period. And I too share those concerns, at least during the construction phase of this project. Through this process, we have heard from the Lincoln Bold Development Team a commitment to offer free valet service to the impacted businesses. And I have verified that with that development team, with their attorney, and have seen their memorandum of understanding to that effect. I too have had discussions with urban development to make sure that they are in constant discussion, as they always are, with surrounding businesses to make sure that this process is as painless as it possibly can be, at least through the construction process. And I do believe that both of these entities will work their very best during the construction process to support these impacted businesses as much as possible. I've gotten a lot of emails from folks over the last few weeks stating, asking me to vote no on this project for a lot of different reasons, but one of the main reasons has to do with parking. And I think that we have had decades and decades of policy regarding parking in this area, specifically the Hay Market. And I think that that policy continues to hold true going forward. I would like to commend the Urban Development Department for their foresight and their work to provide parking in new growth areas of the Hay Market because the Hay Market and the demand to visit the Hay Market will continue to grow regardless of whether or not Lincoln Bold is built. It will continue, that demand will continue to grow because Lincoln is a growing community, and the Hay Market serves as a destination for a lot of our restaurants and a lot of our retailers and a lot of our bars. So growth is inevitable, and I believe that urban development has done a good job of planning for that growth. And I am dedicated to making sure that through the Lincoln Bold Development Team, as well as urban development, that our city services will do the best that we can to support these businesses during this time. All right, very good. Madam Clerk?
Schob.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
No.
Suarez.
No.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried 4 to 2.
7E?
Item 7E is amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 CIP to authorize and appropriate $24,150,000 in TIF funds for the Lincoln Bold redevelopment project and $721,000 in private contributions in lieu of affordable housing project, introduced by Schob.
Second.
Second by McGinnis. Any discussion or questions for staff? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions. I'd like to just say that I'd like to say, sir, thank you for everyone who emailed me, phone-called me, text-messaged me, stopped me on the street, and engaged me in this process. As I look around the community, most people don't engage in the process, and it's exciting when people do. We have a vibrant community, but it's better when we're all at the table and all talking. So I want to thank everyone that did. I also want to talk about the project itself. It's a big project, and a lot of the comments I heard from the public was that parking was a huge issue. Parking is always a huge issue in our city, and I take the developer at their word when they say they're going to work with the businesses and the residents in the Hay Market to address parking. I think we, the city, will be willing to help with that too as much as we can. We need to do better. We need to do better. I think we'll be voting today on whether to authorize the developer to seek TIF funding. And I think there's still a lot of confusion on what TIF is, what it does. The city will not be writing a check to the developer. The developer will have to secure funding. We're just authorizing him to do that. There's still some question on whether the project will proceed with or without TIF funding. So having said that, I look forward to continuing growing Lincoln, and I think this is a step in that direction. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other council members like to speak? Councilwoman, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I wanted folks to understand that my vote against the redevelopment agreement was a vote because I wanted the project to be someplace else, not because I didn't think that the city staff did the best they could with the redevelopment agreement that we have. They did. Now we have a question of saying whether or not we support the authorization of TIF, which is a financing mechanism, as Councilman Schob said, and not a check for $24 million to the developer. I'm going to be voting in support of this because of the $721,000 set aside for affordable housing. Affordable housing is absolutely critical in our community right now, and we need more funding for it. And though I would very much like to have affordable housing units in every project, in lieu of payments are what we get right now. And I think the conversation about how we fund affordable housing and where we fund affordable housing needs to be had in a broad community basis. We need to talk about how we incorporate affordable housing policy within TIF, but that's not today. I don't believe in changing the rules on someone in the middle of a process. But I will encourage that we have that conversation so that more people can be involved in the policy that discusses TIF and affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else that would like to speak?
I just wanted to.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Make a note that I understand that this building meets all legal requirements in terms of zoning, height. It's an extremely blotted designation, and so it does, in my opinion, qualify for TIF. And seeing that how we just voted, I too would favor and vote, or vote in favor.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Suarez.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7F is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Lincoln Bold redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed $24,150,000, introduced by Schob.
So moved. Second.
Second, McGinnis. Any discussion, comments? All right, very good. Madam Clerk?
Washington.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes section seven of our agenda. Section eight is resolutions, first readings, items 8A and 8B. Section nine is ordinances, first reading, and related resolutions are items 9A through 9C. And our pending list includes items 10A through 10C.
All right, very good. Well, tonight is March 13th. We have a period of public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on today's agenda nor planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at the open microphone session to be held now. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak regardless of the number of topics. Again, today's an open microphone session. Our next one will be March 27th. Is there anyone here to speak to the council tonight? Please come forward. Is there anyone here to speak during the public comment section tonight? If so, please come forward.
I'm Rosina. I thought my phone. I thought the next one was the 27th.
Speak then, too.
If you could just give your name and address when you begin.
Rosina Paolini, R-O-S-I-N-A-P-A-O-L-I-N-I. So this isn't on the... I like to be solution-based. I really do. So my hope is, much like Sandra said, that we can start coming together on the process. I think we can say that the process is failing us, in part because our citizens don't even know when to get into the game, right? Which is why your planning commission shows, has a public hearing with nobody at it. So how do we improve that? We've talked about methods of outreach. Community Heroes provided a really wonderful all-day seminar. We can do things to people, and we can do things for people. The outcome is not good because you don't have the buy-in. You don't have the trust. When you do things with people, that's when you get the buy-in because they have a voice. Not that they're making the decisions, but we can garner some expertise that I might not know, like congestion of traffic at 5 o'clock, the patterns of a valet driver. For me, short-term, long goals with my patient, not letting the adult in the room, which in this child case may be the child, take over the decision-making. So I ask you, how is it that we bring our community back together? Because right now we have a serious distrust going on. You know me. I'm Rosina Paolini. For years, I have spoken for those who can't, about 30 years. Many of you don't know me, Tom, or you. But that's how long I've been doing this. I can tell you about the Calvert Rec Center, where we didn't have the funds for a geothermal pump and no gym for the kids. We made it happen. So I'm not new to this process. But in my 30 years here, I will share with you that the process has changed. The interpretation of our policy and goals is not what it was when I helped develop them on the Mayor's Environmental Task Force through the initial planning of 2040 Comp Plan. So when I come up here and speak with you, it is with that history of which I speak. When we all worked really hard together, A, because we were really broke between the '90s and 210, so we had to be resourceful. We had to come together. I will give you a personal story, and you've heard a couple. I was married with the same man for 40 years. I was affluent, 150 and about 150 grand between the two of us. I'm thankful to have my house. But due to.
One minute?
Issues, mostly issues, had to resolve that. I had five grand. Didn't know how long it'd last. I know those food pantries better than probably any of you here today. They're the best people there, and they've got a real pulse on what's going on. So when I speak of the distrust, it's on all levels, whether it's how we develop a master plan for the bike community, which sort of forgot about how we get to the park, if it's about the planning commission, and where do we get into the process to even have a voice? Because we know once I've come to you, or earlier, right? It's a done deal. That is the perception. It's also what I hear from people.
Time.
So I implore you for a deeper discussion. There are very few of us, David Carey, Dan, who have this history, who remember where we started when we initially developed this comp plan and how we have deviated from the intention since. And I thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
What questions do you have?
Any questions? Seen none? Thank you.
I hope you have some in the future.
Anyone else who would like to comment during the public comment period? Okay, seen none. Yes, please come forward.
Hi. This is my first time, so I wasn't really planning on this.
Okay. Could you start with your name and your address, please?
Yep. My name's Lindsay Limbach, and my address is 3234 C Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68510. And I just really want to uplift what Rosina just said. I'm also just a little, I'm very nervous right now, but I'm also just a little frustrated with the process of being able to use my voice as it relates to developments and other things coming to Lincoln. And as Rosina said, there are many ways to bring public along in the process in a really genuine way because the trust is lost. And I haven't lived in Lincoln my whole life, but I've been here for 15-plus years. Came from central Nebraska and really planned to leave, but what really kept me in Lincoln was the uniqueness and the vibrancy in the neighborhoods that are just really wonderful. And I'm really not excited with the way that Lincoln is going. And I just implore you to look at asset-based community development as a strategy for really bringing people along. ABCD is the acronym. It talks about what Rosina was talking about, not doing things to or for people, but really working with people. working with people, and genuinely listening to what people actually have to say and how they'd like to see their community moving forward. I'm not talking about people necessarily who have all the funds, but people who really live and breathe this life in Lincoln. And so just using that as something to look into that is evidence-based. I sent all of you an email, thank you for those of you who responded to me, about the Bold project. I'm also here to talk more about ABCD and anything else that relates to really bringing residents in, really before we get to places like this, not only with Lincoln Bold, but with other developments and things happening in Lincoln. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for our testifier? Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Yes, please come forward. If you could just start with your name and address, please?
My name's Eli Bryan, 1117 H Street. I don't know where Tammy Ward is, I don't know why the vote couldn't be postponed, I don't know.
So tonight's testimony is about things that are not on today's agenda?
Okay. And I guess I don't have much to say, just a little disappointed. Thanks for your service, which you guys do. I have nothing much else to say, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Very good. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? All right, very good. Entertained a motion.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, Washington, seconded by McGinnis. Roll call, please.
Show.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Suarez.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
We are adjourned.